Good afternoon. This is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, and we are resuming the budget public hearing schedule for 4th of December at 3:30. And so with that, earlier today, we had the transportation, environment, and land use, specifically the community planning, economic development, and public works come open up for testimony from the public and for those two department officials to be able to speak respectfully on their upcoming budget. Now, we're going to go into the 3:30 portion, which is the budget amendment for number seven. And so I'm going to turn it over to Robin Campbell, who is the budget officer for Thurston County. And so, Robin, take it from here, and then we'll see if there's any public involvement.
Thank you, Commissioner. Did you have a comment? Nope? Okay. You're signaling. Okay. So, this afternoon, I am requesting that you consider and accept public testimony on budget amendment number seven. Now, that's an odd way to refer to the budget amendments because...
What does that mean?
Yes, what does that mean? In the past, Thurston County did a budget amendment every quarter. This year, we started to whittle back on the number of amendments. So, this year, we've only had three amendments. We're trying to step away from calling them quarterly amendments. So, we've just simply numbered them, and this is the seventh amendment of the biennium.
Okay, great.
So, budget amendment number seven. No, no, in fact, we are going the opposite way. We are going to have next year only two amendments. The spring amendment and the final annual amendment. And we'll see how that works.
That's a new era for us, isn't it?
Yeah, this is a very good thing to have less amendments during the year. Many counties that I've talked to only have one budget amendment at the very end of the year.
And we used to have four.
Yes, we used to have four. So, it's good going down. This amendment addresses many technical issues and also new grant funding that's coming into the county. There are transfers in this amendment.
Robin, just for the sake of the audience, you do not have that on the screens?
No, we don't have this available for projection.
Okay.
But there is a copy, and it was published two weeks ago in accordance, a little more than two weeks ago, I think, with the amendment. But it has been available for public viewing.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Just want to make sure where you're speaking from.
Yeah, it's not on the screen.
From your desk.
Right.
Okay.
So, just to walk through a few of the highlights and things for you to consider in this budget. We have received funding from the Secretary of State's office for prepaid postage for our election ballots.
Oh, good.
So, that's $68,000 this year. We received the grant, and we've spent it in the general election.
Did it cover the entire cost?
It did in this election.
Okay, good.
$68,000. We don't know if the state will pay for prepaid postage next year.
Future?
It's one of the things that is on our legislative agenda.
Oh, good.
And that all counties are requesting of the state.
We got one thing right. No unfunded mandate.
That's right. It would be an unfunded mandate otherwise. Quite a few of these items are for what's called TST indirect. TST is our Treatment Sales Tax Fund. And we have not been paying indirect costs from that fund for the various programs throughout the county. We have determined a way to calculate that. We have advice from our attorney that says it is a legal cost, and we should be charging indirect to that fund under the fair and equitable cost allocation rules of accounting. So, we're shifting costs out of the general fund to Treatment Sales Tax to cover indirect costs with those associated programs. That's quite a few of the line items in this budget. The board has determined that you would like to sweep the interest from a short list of funds.
You have a question?
Yeah, do you, what was the amount you were shifting from general fund to TST?
To TST? Actually, it's quite substantial. There is a number of these lines. I don't have a total number, but $120,000 from district court. Here, we've got...
About half a million or...
It adds up to a quarter of a million, probably, overall. There's superior court adjustment of $285,000. This is money that'll come into the general fund to cover costs this year. Next year, we're going to a model that we're calling direct appropriation, so there won't be this transfer of money. And that will be a little bit cleaner and probably a little bit trickier when it comes to indirect. But this year, it creates more revenue into the general fund. Back to the sweeping of interest. Interest accrued in the detention facilities sales tax fund, conservation futures, the real estate excise tax funds, both first and second quarter, the storm and surface water utility fund, and the capital fund, and the unemployment compensation fund. Interest earned in those funds will be transferred to the general fund. That amounts to about $300,000 this year. We have, the sheriff's office is going to be administering the narcotics task force. It had been administered by the city of Lacey, is now being administered by the sheriff's office. So, this budget amendment includes an appropriation for both the sheriff and the prosecuting attorney to be able to spend money out of that newly created fund. There are small grants covered in this. And then there are a few large items for your consideration. The first is in the office of the sheriff. We just completed arbitration in labor negotiations with the deputy sheriff association, and we are recommending to the board to provide $259,000 to cover the cost of living increases for the sheriff's deputies associated with that arbitration decision. In the sheriff's office, there is a budget shortfall, and the sheriff is requesting $173,000 to cover that shortfall this year. It's mainly due to overtime. Then, in the corrections budget, if you look on page two of this document, there are three items being requested. The sheriff anticipates being overspent in corrections by $54,000. He has requested a combined amount of about $123,000. I am recommending that you fund the full amount. Any amount that is not spent by the sheriff will be reverted back to the general fund. But appropriating this entire amount gives them room in case the estimate that's being made at this time is a little short, and if they should go over that, you won't have another opportunity to cover the sheriff's budget. We don't want any office or department in the county to overspend their appropriation.
And what is that, $54,000, $120,000, or whatever thousand for?
So, the...
Shortfall.
The shortfall, again, mainly in overtime costs. They also, in corrections, there was a contract with the Criminal Justice Training Commission that, for whatever reason, was not included in the budget. Had it been included, as it should have been, they possibly would not have needed this amendment. So, that's just something that we're watching for. We've made sure that that is in next biennium's budget. So, the other large dollar item, if you will, is in the Thurston County Public Defense Office. They have projected overspending of approximately $288,000. That is mainly due to extraordinary expenses related to death penalty cases. And across the county, we have spent a little over $400,000 in public defense, the prosecutor's office, and the jail to address these murder cases. There are three cases that the county had to take care of last year and this year, and in each year, the expenses were over $400,000. We have, according to state law, requested relief from the legislature. We didn't get it last year, but we are very hopeful that this year, the legislature will address our needs. And in fact, we are asking the legislature to please pay for both years. So, almost $1 million for three public defense cases.
And do you think we'll get it?
I'm sorry, do I know if we're going to get it?
You're crystal ball on that.
Hope he's not a method.
So, we didn't, we didn't last year. I am hopeful, but I will be surprised if the legislature pays the cost this year.
So, what does your crystal ball say?
My crystal ball says that we need to figure out how to pay for that ourselves.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But the reality is, we had to provide that defense on most particular cases. We had no choice, right?
That's correct. We had no choice. So, we have paid for it. It's coming out of our fund balance. You're being asked to cover the appropriation, to cover the costs this year. The amount for public defense is $288,000. But again, we're asking the legislature for some relief. We'll see.
Which is nice that we have that option. The legislature allows us to ask for that relief.
Yes.
But it never happens.
Well, in the past, it has not happened for Thurston County.
Yeah, not for Thurston County.
But in prior years, they had covered costs in other counties. So, it will depend on the state of the state, if you will.
State of the state.
So, those are really the big items in the general fund. Total general fund, the revenue increase is $964,000. Again, largely in part because we are claiming the TST indirect and shifting interest. And then the expenditure increase is $846,000. In other funds, the total amount... Total other funds, the revenue increase is approximately $1.2 million. The expenditure increase is $4 million. And I'm looking, the big amounts, we need to put in a transfer to cover costs in our REIT fund. And, yep, in public health, we will be paying $1.7 million to reconcile the amount of funds that were being held for the behavioral health organization.
How much?
1.7.
How do you...
We thought we had it down to 1.2, but after all the accounting dust settled, it is the higher amount.
Is that because of the interest?
No, this does not include interest. So, we've not negotiated an interest payment at this point in time.
Okay.
So, one point, we will pay 1.7 million, and then if we should determine that there is interest owed, we'll take care of that next year.
Oh, my God.
In my opinion, we should not be paying the interest, but...
All right, we need to talk about that.
Right. So, there is also $750,000 increase for TCOM 911 in that program. It is simply a pass-through. The county collects the 911 tax from telephone lines, and we pass that directly through. We're collecting more tax than we ever thought we would, so we're asking you to increase that by 750,000. Those are the big-ticket items there. And of course, increases from Treatment Sales Tax to be able to pay in to the general fund. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, any questions of Robin?
No, I do not at this time, but I'd like the public to know that we spent a lot of time going over this stuff prior to this. And it's some detailed numbers, and if the public has any comment, I'd surely like to hear about it. But no questions.
No questions. Thank you.
Right. Opened it, opened to public comment.
What are we missing?
What are we missing? Hmm, revenue. We could always use more revenue, but I don't know where it would come from. Is there something in particular, Commissioner, that you're looking for on this list?
Just always trying to bring forward more of it, yeah.
Right. So, this is the, as far as we know, all of the items that are required at this time.
Cookie sales, bake sales.
Yeah. We're having a bake sale, by the way, on Friday. The commissioner's office is sponsoring a bake sale to sponsor a family this Christmas.
Oh.
Yeah.
All right, so we're looking for public comment? Yep. So, at this point, I'll look at the audience and see if there's anybody from the public who would like to come and address the podium, or address the board at the podium, and see if no one, I'll just see if there's any final comments. And off of Romero, no? Okay. Is that it?
That's, that is all of this, and I would suggest that we recess until 4 o'clock.
At this point, we're going to recess for 13 minutes and be back at 4 o'clock to take up with the Health and Human Services, specifically the Public Health and Social Services and Emergency Services, and look forward to that discussion. We are recessed. Services and Emergency Services, and look forward to that discussion. We are recessed. All right. Good afternoon. This is the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners conducting the public, uh, hearing for the budget, for the binding budget of, uh, 2019 and 2020. Uh, we're gonna re- we were in recess, so we're gonna resume, um, that public hearing process. Earlier at 3:30, we heard the Budget Amendment Number Seven. And if, just in case you're wondering, that's the Seventh Amendment during this former or previous binding and budget. Um, now, we're gonna move on to, um, the two department, uh, items here, the Public Health and Social Services and Emergency Services, here at four o'clock. And so, I'm gonna, um, turn it over to Robin Campbell to give a little bit of background, and then, uh, ask if there's any public in the audience that'd like to come and address the board at the podium, and then ask the- the department heads if they'd like to make a comment or two about, uh, where they're at in their budget. So, Robin?
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, so, we are simply continuing on at this point, uh, with the Health and Human Services sector of the county. Um, and we'll start with Public Health and Social Services. Director Shelley Slaughter is with us, um, today. Thank you for being here, Shelley. Um, the main business of Public Health and Social Services is public and environmental health. Um, that includes, um, environmental health includes food, water. Um, public health includes disease control and prevention. Um, and then, there is also treatment for male health and chemical dependency disorders, services for the, um, developmentally-disabled youth and adults, affordable housing, and services for veterans in the social services part of the agency. Um, again, this is a high-level view of what the department does. They do so many other things, but these are their core services. This budget, um, next biennium increases funding to address affordable housing and homelessness issues, which, by the way, was the number-one identified issues, uh, in our citizen survey earlier this year, um, and something that our citizens want addressed in this budget. Um, so, you have done that. This budget expands resources for the Regional Nurse-Family Partnership and, uh, also adds a Veterans Case Manager. There is an opioid response coordinator, uh, added to the public health budget. And then, there is also funding for the beach water quality monitoring program, uh, in our parks, and the food inspection software, um, which will streamline a food inspection process. There is no direct appropriation from the general fund to public health. They are funded mainly out of restricted funds. The restricted funds in Public Health and Social Services, uh, include the Treatment Sales Tax Fund, the Public Health and Social Services Technical Replacement Fund, um, the, what we call Fund 1500, which is the Public Health and Social Services Fund. There is a very small community loan repayment fund. There's an Environmental Health Fund, which I'll come back to. There's also our, um, Community and Housing Fund in Public Health and the Veterans Fund. Um, so, those are the main, um, restricted funds. And in Environmental Health, uh, you've held a public hearing last week about the proposed fee increase for environmental health. So, the revenue in this budget, much like we talked about earlier for the TBD, uh, this budget includes an assumption that there will be increased revenue, um, from an increase in the environmental health fee. Uh, that's part of what you'll be discussing tomorrow, um, taking into consideration the public testimony that you received last week, the- any public comments that have come into us in writing, um, over the last few days. I- I have received one, and, um, the department may have received more. I'm not sure, but we'll hear about that tomorrow. Um, and then, uh, for your consideration, we will have the financial plan for environmental health, so you can see how that balances. And, again, much like the TBD, uh, if the revenue is reduced, do you need to consider reducing the spending? Um, so, that's the information I have for you. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, Robin, on anything?
No.
So, at this juncture, we, uh, take public testimony, so I'll look out to the audience and see if there's any- did anybody sign in on the sheet? No? And look out the audience and see if there's anybody who would like to, by show of hand, come to the podium to address the board. See if no one, all right? And, uh, do you have- did you wanna make a comment on the budget of any sort? No? Sure. You bet.
Thank you very much.
You bet. All right, so we're gonna move on to Emergency Services.
All right. Emergency, um, Services or Emergency Management.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, we have, yes?
I did wanna say one thing on the Public Health and Social Services.
Yes.
And I forgot to mention in Public Works, the accreditation piece there. Um, I didn't know if- it's not written on here, but I think that's super worthwhile to note that that helps, um, a lot of different ways for recruiting, workforce, um, progression and everything. And I'm glad we got it in both Public Works and, uh, Public, uh, Health and Social Services.
Yes, there is funding in both departments to be able to work towards accreditation.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Sorry, that was just on my mind.
No.
Okay.
It's a great addition. All right, so, Emergency Services and Emergency Management. We're joined today by Director Kurt Harden. Thank you, sir, for being here. Um, the core business of our emergency management is, um, to, um, be prepared, uh, for an emergency in the county and to support Medic One, the response to our 911 calls. Um, this budget adds a half of an FTE, uh, to support South County communities, um, to develop emergency plans, and it adds an information and a quality coordinator for Medic One. The budget for Emergency Services, uh, includes a general fund of one-point-seven million in 2019. That drops to approximately, uh, one-point-five million in 2020. That reflects a reduction in anticipated grants from the state and the federal government. The total budget is about eighteen-point-three million in each year. The restricted funds, um, are- there's a very small Emergency Management Council Fund, and then, the Medic One and the Medic One Reserve Fund. I would just note that, uh, in this budget, the Medic One revenue into the Medic One Fund is insufficient to fully cover the cost, so there is a transfer out of Medic One reserves. We are spending down the fund balance in the reserve account, uh, and eventually, may need to address revenue, uh, in that fund, but at this time, it's sufficient to get us through this biennium.
All righty, done.
I do have one question.
Sure, sure.
Robin, could you give me the numbers again for 2019 and 2020 on the general fund commitment?
The general fund is one-point-seven million, or- or to be precise.
Yeah, no, no, that's close, that's close.
Yeah, and in 2020, uh, roughly one-point-five million.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
No, I don't.
Nothing? Okay, sure. Anything else?
Nothing.
Okay, at this point, uh, I don't think anybody signed in. No? So, I'll look at the audience and see if there's anybody who would like to come to the podium from the general public, and see if no one. Uh, do you have any comments about your budget, sir?
I don't think you have any.
Okay, sure. All righty. Uh, so, that covers both the departments, and we've pretty much concluded. Does anything you want to finalize or wrap up in terms of the budget?
Uh, no, that- that's all for Health and Human Services, and then, we'll recess until this evening at 6:30.
Romero, anything? Anything? No? Been going good? Going good?
Yeah, been going great. Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right, at this point, we're gonna recess, and we will resume at 6:30 for the, uh, any public that would like to come and talk about any part of the budget. So, 6:30. We are recessing.
Thank you.